For the five-year forecast, counsel, I did want to bring to your attention, in front of you is a letter from Kathleen Hassan, let us know that she is retiring effective December 1st, and we just certainly want to let her know how much we've appreciated the great work she's done for us all these years. And we're certainly going to miss her services, and we certainly wish her very best.
(inaudible)
Okay, our next thing is event homes and Bill McCauley. Jim, you want to do the introduction here, Bill and Karen?
Briefly, I think, as you all know, this has been an issue that's kind of been brewing for a while, and Mrs. Henley brought it up, I guess, several months ago at this point, and we created an internal working group to work with her and try and, you know, study the issue, see what other areas are doing around the country and addressing it, and we're here, I think, today to give you kind of a status report, progress report, talk about a possible draft solution, just for your information, and then really kick off the process to go out and meet with the community to talk about it in greater detail. So Karen and Bill are here to, really, I think, do most of the presentation.
Well, Karen, you'll kick it off then.
I get to go first.
We're glad to have you here.
And I really have the easier job. I'm going to give you kind of a short overview history about event homes, and then Bill McCauley has the much harder job of talking to you about potential solutions. And this is just going to be a brief overview. We didn't have time to put all the information in the PowerPoint, so you'll have at your package, you'll find a package of further information that we put together. Chris Lancaster, raise your hand, is here with me. He's a senior planner in zoning enforcement. He did a lot of the research and summarized some of it for you. So this is a picture of a wedding being held in what is referred to as an event home. This one is not in Virginia Beach, but it is representative. Oops, I forgot, I'm doing this myself. Okay, Virginia Beach has some wonderful oceanfront and bayfront residential neighborhoods. You've got the Shore Drive neighborhoods, the North End, Croatan, and Sandbridge. All of these neighborhoods have residential lots that were planted in the early 1950s prior to the adoption of any zoning regulations in Virginia Beach. And currently, these neighborhoods are zoned various forms of residential, and Shore Drive area and North End, you've got single-family and duplex zoning. Croatan and Sandbridge is a mix of single-family zoning districts. Most people love to vacation at the beach. Many enjoy the option of short-term vacation rentals, where they rent out of home for a week to have a vacation with your family. The zoning ordinance does not at all address short-term or even long-term rental of dwelling units. Traditionally, long-term rental, which is yearly rental, has occurred in all residential neighborhoods, and short-term, which is weekly or even nightly rental, has occurred in neighborhoods that are on the Atlantic Ocean or Chesapeake Bay. So short-term rentals in the resort residential neighborhoods have become a standard accepted practice over many decades. But short-term rental of homes is now evolving into a different animal. In Virginia Beach, this is most common in Sandbridge. The size of the homes are increasing. I think sanitary sewer, when it became available in Sandbridge in about 2001, contributed to the larger homes, you know, homes could get bigger with the sewer. It also seems to me that the financial crisis in '08 contributed to this shift in use. The bigger homes had been built, and several owners told me that they were underwater on the value, they had mortgages, and they started to market some of the homes for weddings, family reunions, and other events in order to keep from losing the homes. Now, especially the last two years, new homes are being built, primarily in Sandbridge, that are especially designed to be event homes. They can be over 5,000 square feet in size. The new ones are actually 10,000 square feet in size. They can sleep 40 people, got 12 bedrooms, 13 and a half bathrooms, and they've got many amenities, including a few pictures of some in Sandbridge. They have large kitchens, they seem to have two of everything in the kitchen, two refrigerators, two stoves, they've even got two coffee pots. Multiple dining room tables in a large dining area where you can sit and serve food to a lot of people. They have lots of recreational amenities, exercise equipment, pool tables, this one has air hockey, foosball, their video games, several of them have movie theaters with stadium seating. Got nice outdoor pools, lounge areas, fire pits, and this one also has an indoor pool. So this, you know, more intense use has caused, they create more noise, they, especially for the big events, having adequate parking, they generate more trash, and it's just a much more intense use of a dwelling unit that's disruptive to neighboring traditional single-family homes, the neighbors that live there year-round. In Sandbridge, just to give you some rough numbers, there's approximately 1,300 single-family homes, about 610 of those are in the short-term rental pool, and of those, 50 are advertised as event homes where you can rent it for a wedding or a large party. It's a very difficult issue. We all have occasional parties and events in our homes. Several years ago, I worked with the city attorney's office and came up with a zoning interpretation that basically, by right, you could have three of these events per year on any one property. We felt that was reasonable and kind of typical of the activity level that you'd find in a single-family home. If you had more than three per year, we consider you, classify you as an assembly use, and assembly use needs commercial zoning and a conditional use permit. But this is very difficult to enforce, you know, and hard to document. Most of these events occur on evenings and weekends, and some of them are spontaneous. The rental company's position is that they are voluntarily complying, but the civic league and full-time residents in Sandbridge continue to report problems and concerns, and they find that the homes are not compatible with their residential community. And now it's Bill's turn.
Karen and I have worked with Mrs. Henley to, we've had quite a number of discussions and pretty thoroughly vetted this issue, and the one thing I can tell you is that there is no easy answer. That's going to be a tenable answer. You can just throw up your hands and say, do whatever you want, or you can say, nobody can have a party. I don't think that's what counsel had in mind, but our ordinance reflects that, which I will go through now in a relatively quick fashion. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to just ask them. I'd rather have you ask the question and give you the answer than to think about your question while I'm talking. So, anyway, this draft is a preliminary draft, and it's preliminary because we do not think that it's ready to go to city council yet. For one thing, it hasn't been discussed by any of the interested parties on either side. So what we did was drafted an ordinance that would not completely eliminate this kind of activity, that event houses, but it would regulate them, and so it's kind of a middle-of-the-road ordinance that, again, we're not recommending it to counsel, but we're using it as a template to try to achieve consensus, as difficult as that would be, and we're not deluding ourselves. Consensus will be very difficult, but it certainly doesn't hurt to try, and we will try as hard as we can. It's only a starting point to facilitate discussion. There's been a lot of discussion that is very emotional on both sides. We hope that when we meet with people, we can all be calmly, rationally discuss it and come up with something that is acceptable to all parties, although everybody's not going to be happy. We're hoping that at least they won't be, but so mad at us.[547.04][547.04](laughter) So if we do reach an ordinance that is agreed-upon provisions, then we'll just bring it to counsel for counsel's approval. If we can't reach any kind of consensus on what the ordinance would say, then with your approval, we'll be bringing forward an ordinance for council action that is not agreed upon and take it from there. But we do really hope that we can achieve a consensus.
We're your biggest cheerleaders, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Go get them, Tucker.
Right, Barbara?
Absolutely.[583.16][583.16](laughter)
So the intent of the ordinance is to allow occasional rentals for purposes of having large events, but we want to preserve the predominantly residential character of these neighborhoods because they are residential. The feeling is that it shouldn't be a case of single-family dwellings in residential neighborhoods be used primarily for commercial purposes. We understand, though, that people come to Sandbridge or any place in the city for renting a house for a week in the summer with a family, and you may want to have a party there. There's nothing that we feel is wrong with that, you know, of course, there are limits. You can't have wild, crazy parties and people, you know, doing all sorts of things, but I don't think that would be a great big problem. It's just that the commercial aspect of these should not predominate as opposed to the residential aspect of them. So we're not, intent of this ordinance is not to require permits for family gatherings or similar activities that are ordinarily, customarily carried on in residential neighborhoods. There is a special events ordinance which has, requires permits for certain activities. Those special event permits do not cover most of the events here, and so we need to take another approach besides just regulating them with the current special events permit. By the way, we keep mentioning Sandbridge, that's where the problems have essentially been, but this ordinance, unless counsel gives us explicit direction otherwise, would be covering all of the residential areas in the city. It's not just Sandbridge where these large houses are used, but, you know, it could be everywhere, and it's really pretty much only fair to treat all the residential areas the So what this ordinance does is we define an event function, which is what is being regulated. And that's an assembly of people at a single-family dwelling or duplex for a gathering, et cetera, where the total number of attendees at any time exceeds 75 people, and the property is used, designed, maintained, advertised, or held out as a destination for gatherings and invited guests. That's important. That kind of is one thing that distinguishes. If I have a house down there and I want to have a party and invite my friends there, I'm not using that as a destination for gatherings of invited guests, except on, you know, occasionally. And this is a difficult one right here. The difference between event houses, the way they're currently operated, and houses in which people simply come down here for a certain period of time, rent it, and maybe have a party while they're here, is that the event houses are rented typically for periods of three days, and so this would require them, this would include those, but if you have a typical vacation rental, which is seven days, you wouldn't be covered. We understand that that's probably the most important way of approaching this, is to define an event function from one that's just a plain old party that somebody happens to have. That is not perfect by any means. We discussed this at some length in our own office and with planning and Mrs. Henley, and there are ways, quite frankly, that, you know, people could probably get around that. They could rent them for seven days and still have these great big parties or not, but again, that's why we're saying that this is a draft ordinance which is put out there for comment, and we hope that that particular definition, that way of approaching the issue can be improved upon. Just what I mentioned before, a special events permit is something that is used for larger events than this, but these are typically not covered under the special events provision and therefore don't really need a special events permit. That's why we have a special ordinance that we're doing for this one. First of all, you need a permit. It's not a special event permit, it's a different permit, and if you don't do it, then the violations are punishable, the same as violations of the city zoning ordinance, a fine in that amount, $10 to $1,000, and can also be the subject of an injunction to a court. That, again, is something we need to discuss, not really the permit requirement, we think that's pretty fundamental to this approach, but the violations, I mean, that, again, is put out for discussion, and we felt that the, since it's, this is not a zoning ordinance, but it kind of is like a zoning ordinance, the punishment, for starters, to suggest it anyway, should be the same as violations of the city zoning ordinance. So to get a permit, you have to file an application, it's made to the city manager or his designee, and that is not something that we have determined who the designee is. I have a funny suspicion that it will be zoning, but maybe not. Again, that's up to the manager, whoever that may be, in 2016. It's a $200 fee to cover the cost of processing, which is just the same as the fee for a special events permit because the process is so similar. It's got to be between 30 days and six months of the proposed events function that's prior to the function. That, again, is something we took straight from the special events permit ordinance, just the same period of time, there's no magic to that. And applications have to contain the following information. First, it's got to be a description of the proposed event, however many people you think would be there, if it's going to be indoors or outdoors or both, if there's going to be amplified music, just the basic information like the date, beginning and ending times and location of the event, what you're going to do about litter control, traffic control and parking, which is one of the big, big issues with people down there, the roads are so narrow, they're maybe even narrower because the sand is blowing on them, and while the police do tow and give tickets, we need to have some provisions in there where people are going to park other than right on the streets. This is new. We would require copies of notices to adjacent property owners and owners of property within its, I believe it's like 500 feet of the event, just so they, yeah, it is 500 feet of the nearest portion of the property where the event is. That is just so that people know about it, they will be, they will be able to give comments to the person who does the permitting, and they can, you know, in extreme case, I guess they can make plans to do something else that night. But we're hoping that this ordinance is not just, you know, so people know that there's a great big party and they all leave town. It's really something to try to calm down the issues that have arisen because of these. And the purpose of the notice is essentially to get people to be able to comment that, just give us their feelings so the process is a fair one. We also are going to require the name and address and telephone number of someone who's responsible for ensuring compliance with the provisions of the ordinance and the conditions of the permit. That's just to ensure that someone is going to be out there to make sure, hopefully, that the provisions of the ordinance are complied with and the conditions of the permanent, of the permit are complied with, rather than just having a permit issue and nobody's responsible so everybody's pointing fingers, he did this, she did this, et cetera. A certificate of compliance from the fire marshal and one from the building official, just that the required standards have been met. And additional information as the city can, or city manager or his designee can require, within reason, and I think the ordinance states specifically, in order to determine whether the provisions of the ordinance and the public safety are preserved. The application has to be granted or denied within 21 days. That's so that the people are not, you know, it's reasonable to require, to give people a timely notice of whether or not the application's granted or denied. It's got to be in writing. If it's denied, it's got to set forth the conditions of the permit, and if it is denied, the applicant can have a hearing before the city manager or his designee. So when do you have to grant a permit? If all of these are met, that there's adequate parking, either by shuttle services, onsite parking, or public parking lots, there's been some discussion, although way, way far from an accomplished fact, of perhaps opening up one of the city parking lots at night and recharging people to park there, or requiring shuttle service. One way or the other, parking will not be met by parking on the street. That's a given, I don't think anybody's going to be arguing with that. This is a little bit general, but the proposed activity can't prevent a safety or health risk to attendees or to persons residing in the neighborhood. That includes things like no fireworks, anything like that, and there are fireworks that are not unusual for them to be there at one of these parties. The proposed activity is compatible with the surrounding area or neighborhood. I'm not sure, that's very general, and I think we're going to have to go ahead and work on that particular language, but something along those lines, that there's a measure of compatibility with, between the activity and the fact that people live in that same The applicant has to have adequate liability insurance, of course. I think the realty companies that advertise these places do require that anyway, but this would make it codified. And that the city manager, and he also, the city manager or his designee can also require other conditions besides the ones that are in the ordinance, as long as they protect the public health, safety, et cetera, and they can include a reasonable fee for the use or allocation of city property, not exceeding the actual costs incurred by the city. That is also something that was more recently put in the special events permit ordinance. It'd be a posting of a performance bond or other surety. He can also include specific provisions for adequate crowd and traffic control, all these things, food handling waste, refuse disposal. Again, these are specific conditions that he can impose. The duration, location, number of any portable storage containers, which is another hot-button issue, there's a lot of trash after a lot of these, and there certainly shouldn't be. Then some other requirements which are very fundamental to this ordinance, I save for last. First, there can be a maximum of three event functions within a period of 12 consecutive No portion of any event shall take place after midnight or before 10:00 a.m. And a maximum of 100 attendees on the property at any one time. We understand that'll be pretty difficult to enforce. We're not going to station somebody out there and count noses or anything, but until somebody can think of some better way to do that, that's in the ordinance, and again, this is why we're putting this out as a, as a template to try to attain some kind of consensus about. And let's face it, you know, people have good ideas that don't occur to us, and we're hoping that people will have some that we can incorporate into this ordinance. And then the people who are responsible for the compliance with the provisions of the ordinance and the permit have to be on the property at all times during the event function. You can't just name, you know, your Aunt Tilly who's in Texas or something. The person has to be there. Next steps, we're going to send the ordinance to interested persons in civic leagues and solicit comments. We'll schedule workshops with them, as many as are needed. If the result is an agreed-on ordinance, we'll bring back to counsel for the action. And if no agreement, as we said, we would advise counsel that despite our best efforts, we just can't agree on a consensus ordinance, and we'll seek your further direction. If that means going forward with our ordinance anyway, then we will do that. If counsel decides not to, we will certainly abide by that direction as well. And at this point, I guess we're open for questions or comments?
Thank you very much, and we've got some already. We've got Jim Wood, and then Rosemary, then Amelia, then Barbara.
Let me ask a couple of questions. First off, has anybody talked to the people in the Outer Banks about how they manage them, because they have a great, great deal of these large houses down there?
I haven't had...
Yeah, we kind of put a summary of some things we found out in that package of information.
The other question I have is, I think it's, I think, I'm not minimizing the fact that there's a problem, but I think this is kind of overbroad, the way this goes, and my question is, let's say that I'm coming down from Pennsylvania and I have one of these events, and the threat to me is a zoning violation, and I'm going back to Pennsylvania, so I don't care if you cite me for a zoning violation, you know, I'm still going to have the event. And then the question goes back, is the owner responsible or the tenant responsible for an event that's held at the property?
Well, as to the first issue, coming down from Pennsylvania, if you're renting it for more than three days, which is typical, seven days...
Right.
...you're not covered by this ordinance, so you can have your party. The other thing is the person responsible is, the answer to your second question, it's whoever is responsible for the event under the permit as well. The owner of property is always responsible for what goes on there. So I think probably...
So then, taking that to the conclusion then, if I own a mega house at Sandbridge or wherever in the city, and I rent it out to John who, I don't know, he's bringing 40 of his best friends and they're going to have a giant party and that sort of thing, it's my responsibility or is it his?
Well, you own the house, I mean...
I understand that, but I mean, in terms of...
It would be yours. Well, in terms of four, it's 75 is the...
Or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, well, I understand that. Yeah, I mean, I think under common law that the owner's pretty much responsible for all those things. Doesn't have to be that way. Again, this is our trial balloon, but the way that we're envisioning it is that primarily we would hold the person who is responsible in the permit for compliance. He's the person we would take to court, but I think if we got in a situation where we sought an injunction, it would be, and that's something that we wouldn't do if it's just one time. There's no purpose, no sense in doing that, but if a person keeps repeatedly violating the ordinance or not getting a permit or something like that, I think we could go ahead and ask for injunction.
That's where it kind of falls apart for me, because, you know, again, if I own the house and I'm renting it to people, you know, so John, for example, is going to, I hate to point to you, but...
No, you don't.
Shannon.[1621.24][1621.24](laughter)
Most likely to have the party. O D U L G.
So he's going to be there one time in the year, and then somebody else is going to rent it one time, so the house itself only gets so many parties a year?
Right, so, not parties, but event functions.
Yeah.
And again, if you're renting it to John for more than, for seven days, or not renting it for less than seven, the ordinance doesn't apply. And typically, I think the, from the information we have, the party rentals are typically for three days, and the vacation rentals are for seven. So somebody coming down to Sandbridge from Pennsylvania or wherever, renting a house for seven days or more, isn't subject to this ordinance, which was our intent. We share the same concerns.
But isn't the result still the same for the people who live in Sandbridge, that they, if I rent it for seven days or four days and I still have the event, I'm still going to have all the cars on the road and...
That's, that's a, our major conundrum is trying to fix every situation, but what we're really looking at is the commercial use of a property rather than somebody who, you know, is renting a house and happens to have a party. That's done everywhere, and in fact, you know, that can be a problem if someone owns his house and he's owned it for 20 years and never rents it. You know, he has a big party and the problems are the same. So it's a very difficult issue. We looked at that from every possible angle and came up with the number of people, as well as the rental period, to try to separate the occasional problem from a recurring problem. And it's not perfect, but it's not going to be perfect. We're just trying to get a handle on it and kind of reduce the, you know, the conflicts there.
Rosemary.
Let me ask you a question about the, so the permit's $200, and then if it's a wedding, is it the wedding fee on top of that as well? The wedding fee?
Wedding fees are not on Sandbridge.
Not on Sandbridge?
No, this is just for the permit, like any special events permit has its...
I understand, but if you're having, if your event is a wedding...
If you have to get a special events permit for the wedding, which is, I think, one of the categories, then you would not have to, you would not fall under the...
But you're not getting double fee?
Right. You either have a special events permit under the current ordinance...
But you don't have both.
...or you have a party, event function permit.
I'm having both.
Right.
I just, I think that something we all need to keep in mind is, we have allowed these houses to be built. houses to be built.
Got you.
Now, I mean, we, people have invested a large amount of money to build a 12-bedroom house with 12 bathrooms, and we allowed it. And I'm sure that they built those houses with the.
Well, they, they built those houses, they have approval for a residential site plan and residential building code. They were built as single-family homes.
Let me finish what I was saying.
I'm sorry.
So, Webby, we still have, we still allow these 12, 13-bedroom houses to be built. And we also collect hotel taxes on them, which is, how much is it, John? 15, 16%?
More in Sandbridge, because they pay the SSD.
Yeah. So not only have we allowed them to be built, we charge them a large amount of money for hotel taxes, which is higher than the ocean fee, I think 15 or 16%. So while we're looking at that, I just think we should all keep in mind that we've, we are part of that.
Amelia?
Well, as you know, Karen, remember, we had the same kind of situation in Chick's Beach?
Right.
Where we had, and theirs, they didn't have fences or anything across, so the party spilled over into the neighborhood's yard, and that's why I was called in about that. Again, what you're saying, they're residential. But Rosemary's saying they're paying hotel taxes, which means we are aware that they're being used in this form.
Yeah, I mean, we collect hotel taxes on them, and it's a lot of, maybe as much as 16%.
This is, there is other, there's two sides to this issue, for sure, and it's very, very difficult to reconcile, and we understand all that.
People made a large investment.
That's the reason we got great faith in you, Bill, working in there.
It should be at least sensible.
We're gonna stay out of this one.
Yeah, there should be sensibility. For example, what happened at Chick's Beach, the garbage was being thrown, the dogs was running around right into the next people's neighborhood, which is a safety threat. So this at least will help in some way, so like Rosemary's saying, I didn't realize that part of it, that they're also paying.
There's a lot of money down there. Bobby?
Very difficult decision.
Yeah, thank you. Bill, are a lot of these properties, do they have a property manager that's common, that local person that oversees?
Right, typically, they're advertised for these purposes by a realty company.
Wouldn't they be a natural person, you know, to bear, you know, the responsibility for a lot of the permits and compliance and things of that nature?
Could be, yes. That's one way to approach it, sure. But the, if I were a representative of a realty company and I rented a house for one of these places, and now they, I don't really, I'm not gonna take sides here, but they do some things to make sure that, to the extent possible, I guess, that the activities are, you know, that there's parking provisions, that there's insurance, things like that. I don't know if I could really be responsible for what happens at one of these because I rented the, the agent renting the property for them. What happens if there's like two different houses or three different houses that my realty company represents and they're all having an event function on that same night? That's why we're saying somebody has to designate, be designated as responsible person, and I'm thinking it's whoever it is that is renting the house, you know, who's paying the money and is gonna be the host of the party, should be the, probably the person who's responsible. But again, it's, it's something that we will be discussing, who is ultimately responsible for that. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would think that, you know, the owners or the, you know, the managers of the property would wanna make sure that, you know, a lot of, with the rentals and the Outer Banks, you know, a lot of damage with these parties that, you know, that have the potential to go on. And the other thing is, I think a lot of companies nowadays are using these type of facilities for retreats and, you know, things of that nature. And, you know, and I don't, some of these places I know get maybe, what, $10,000, $15,000 a week?
I wouldn't doubt it. Across the mother line, 18.
You know, but I think, you know, the main concern to the neighborhood.
Like 16%.
The hoods, if these are going to be, you know, events, even though they're technically private property, there's, you know, the parking has gotta be the biggest nightmare for, you know, you know, the residents, because I've been to places in the Outer Banks where parking was challenged. And I think that's where a lot of the inconvenience comes. And, you know, the shuttle parking, you know, concept, I think, would alleviate a lot of the problems. And, you know, the property manager can have a constant, you know, in-place.
Absolutely.
You know, operation that becomes part of it, where, you know, maybe the city can get, you know, some of the money for, you know, offering parking or, you know, things that, I don't know.
Right.
But, you know, this is a tough one, but, you know, I think, you know, the people that, you know, the agencies that are responsible for the party have to at least pay, play a major part of this.
Sure.
For consistency reasons.
I suspect that when the first, if this is adopted and the first permit comes in, there's no such place as a single-family residence there that has space for like 75 cars. So I think probably the requirement would be for some form of shuttle or valet service, something like that, park someplace else, and we'll take you to the party. They do that a lot now, I understand, but I don't see any other way of accomplishing, you know, getting all the cars out of the road and all that kind of, I mean, it gets so bad that police have to tow sometimes because they're, you know, they can't get through for fire or ambulances or something like that.
That's not fair to the neighbors.
Right, right.
You know, the year-round resident.
Right. Yes, sir, absolutely.
Shannon, then Barbara?
I'm, I'm not an advocate for anarchy. However, you know, I'm not an advocate of more laws, more rules, more restrictions. It seems so complicated. I guess what I'm getting ready to ask you to do is almost the impossible, is if we could simplify it and dummy it down, I mean, it's so, it's so laborious. It's just, it's just so complicated. But then the second thing is, while we're looking at this, coming from an events background, as I talk to folks and organizations throughout the city all the time, who struggle with the clarity and the special events permits and the cloud of confusion that sometimes overcast those in the sense that you're at the oceanfront, it has this, and you're at Sandbridge, it has this, and then at Town Center, there's yet something else. And I would hope that at this time, we could take, as we're looking at this and incorporating the special events permit in with this, take a look at that special events permit licensing and experience as well, because it's not, it's not as straightforward as it probably should be and not as simple as it probably should be. So I would hope that we would be able to simplify this a little bit better.
Yeah, I mean, we, we will do our very best, ma'am. I mean, that's, it's difficult, because there are so many different ways of getting around the ordinance and, and, well, not so many, but I mean, it just, you have to write ordinances to prevent the loopholes, and that makes it longer. When it's longer, it's more complicated. But we will do our very, very best, we can promise you that.
Okay, Barbara?
Well, I know there's, there's long been the special events permit process, and that applies anywhere anybody has something that comes under this category of a special event. And, you know, this, though, is a different thing. And you all are beginning to understand just how complicated it is. And, you know, we have been talking about this for quite some time down in the Sandbridge area. But I guess Sandbridge being different from some of our other oceanfront neighborhoods because, you know, it has evolved kind of recently, but I think other oceanfront areas have long also been places where people have a second home and they vacation, and then they may rent it for different lengths of time. And this has happened in Sandbridge since it was, was, building began there, which I think started in probably the mid-'50s. And so this short-term rental of houses for a family vacation has been a part of Sandbridge from the beginning, but Sandbridge is also residentially zoned and is a residential community. And over time, more and more full-time residents are in Sandbridge. And so, but, but this short-term rental of a family vacation coming down, you know, families coming down and vacationing for a week and having a good time and then going back, you know, has, has worked, and I'm sure there were occasional noisy parties and so forth, but they, you know, that's been okay. And I think this is the thing that, you know, the community understands and accepts. But this uniqueness of these special event houses, for last, of a better term, we'll call them special event houses, has evolved in just the last few years. And we see that, though, not only in Virginia Beach, but all over the country. You mentioned, you know, the Outer Banks, and Karen and her folks have done a real good job of looking at how other cities are addressing them. But it's that commercial nature, and I think this definition of an event function being an assembly of people for a special event, if you notice, as it has here, is that this property is used, designed, maintained, and advertised or held out as a destination for gatherings of invited guests. And that's clearly different from a residential facility in a residential neighborhood. And it's that commercial nature of it that, you know, people are questioning, because, you know, when does it stop being that commercial structure and commercial property that would require a commercial zoning designation, and when it's become a residential? And this, it's sort of hit that tipping point that, you know, as things have happened and they've really evolved to the point that it's causing a lot of, a problem to people who live there, who even vacation there. They come for their week of enjoyment and they've got one of these event houses next to them, and it's quite a problem. And so it is a, it's sort of a hybrid, and it's very difficult to, you know, to try to be fair. But, you know, as far as our allowing these properties, Karen is very right. These properties came in and they got a building permit for a residential home. And there are a number of residential homes where people live full-time, who do have 10 bedrooms and 15 bathrooms, which I would never want to have to worry about keeping clean. But they do. And there are single-family homes that, that are like that. And, I mean, many of them at Sandbridge. And so, but it's the ones that are being used, designed, maintained, advertised, and held out as special, as a definition for these special events. That's not a single-family home. That's some kind of commercial thing. And so it's trying to keep that commercial from dominating the residential that, you know, we're attempting to do in a fashion that recognizes that, you know, there are some of these. And so that's why this attempts to allow some, but not allow something on an unregulated basis. And I think the permit, we've talked all around it, but one of the things that is very difficult about anything we do is enforcement. And, you know, they, we, we don't wanna do anything that we can't enforce. And in order to enforce something, we have to know what's going to happen. And I don't think it's good to require the neighbors, the adjoining neighbors, to be the enforcers for us, or the, the people who set the enforcement in motion. It's just not right to put them in that, that position, that they have to be the ones to call the police. And it's also not right that we ask the police to be our zoning enforcement officers. They've got many other things to do. And so the permit process allows us to know that it's going to happen and requires that these things that are problems be addressed in the permit. You've got to show us where your parking is gonna be. You've got to show us how many people you're gonna have. You've got to show that your property is, is, the fire marshal says that it's okay for it and so forth. And so then we can also keep track that, that we don't have a property that is having to a weekend, which some of them do. You know, that's asking an awful lot for the adjoining property owners to tolerate. So I know all of these things are difficult and so forth, and so the community has really been struggling with this because they want to, you know, continue allowing the vacation home rental, but recognizing that there are now over 50 of these identified event houses and knowing the kinds of problems that they're creating, the community has said, hey, wait a minute, let's, and I think I've, this is, this is a packet that Scott emails and so forth that I've received on both sides over the last few months. It's, it's an issue that we really do need to address, and I really appreciate Karen and Bill spending all the time that they have on this. And I hope that, you know, you all will allow me to share some of the information that's come to me from people who say, you know, I'm not trying to stop people from renting their home to, you know, people in the summer for vacation the way they always have, but we really can't tolerate, we just, something's gotta be done to control this commercialization that's occurring. And I will say, as far as the, the taxing situation, I don't know if that kind of hinges an awful lot on the, the agreement that we came to in the community back in the '90s when we established the sand replenishment project. And when we came up with the SSD, you know, that not only addressed additional tax revenue that the residential properties pay, but also additional revenue that these rentals pay that goes specifically to the SSD, which has allowed Sandbridge to have recurring sand replenishment projects, which at the beginning were supposed to be substantially federally funded, now are completely local funded. And so it's, it's a really important thing that, you know, we, we address that, and I don't think we want to mess that up at all, because Sandbridge has something that none of our other oceanfront communities have, and that's a, a process for paying for sand replenishment. So that's why the, the fee, the tax fees on these rentals is higher and where the money goes. So I appreciate all of your interest and concern, and I'll be glad to try to answer questions, and we'll certainly continue to work with everybody to try to come to something that is reasonable and the community can, can support, so.
Very good. John Moss?
Well, as the son-in-law of a mother-in-law who owns a property across from one of these event homes, I'll share a little bit of experience that I've had, and also the rationale of why they do it. It's kind of interesting. So this is, this is 11 master bedrooms. It has an indoor pool and an outdoor pool. The indoor pool's on the second deck. Imagine that.
Your mother-in-law's property or the middle?
No, this is the house just across the street. My mother-in-law's, but across the street, so I'm familiar. So I went over and I asked her, John, when they had one of these, only because we drove up to be at the beach house, it's not a rented property, and our parking lot was full of cars. Not our cars, but cars. So I went across the street, it was very nice, and said, you can have one side of the driveway, but we would like the other half cleared so we can get in. He was very nice. And I said, can I just ask you what the economics? Because I think it's important to understand why, what's the demand signal? What's the business logic?
Three or four things.
Because in the end, it gets back to Rosemary's fundamental question about, let's make sure we know what we're doing and what expectations we set. He said, oh, this is much cheaper than being at a hotel. He says, because they charge you a fortune for the food and for the liquor, but they give you the room for free. He says, here I can put the wedding guest in the house, I can get my own caterer, provide my own booze, and I got my own place. And this is much cheaper, and it is a logic you'll hear over and over. To Bobby's point, one time, I won't mention the firm, rented this place for three weeks consecutively, and they were bringing clients, they didn't have to stay there, and every three days, this is over three period, there was a different gathering that took place at this place, some more interesting than others. Sidebar, I'll tell you about it, though. Anyway. But my point being, and getting back to your point, there's a business case that talks about what they built these properties for, good, better, and different. When you change the frequency of events, you change the cash flow of the properties, you change what happens with the properties, you change valuations, people can't adjust. So I think we also need to make sure that we really wanna do is manage the effect, you know, the effect of the properties. And I do think the parking is a big one, and numbers. But every place has kind of a fire code and kind of a parking. I think, can you make, get the properties pre-certified somehow for events, you know, right up? right up front what the fire, because you think a hundred people, each lot's 10,000 square feet, they're a hundred by a hundred. That's one person per 100 square feet, if I got my math right. That may or may not be the right number. But my point being is, there has to be some kind of science to that. But pre-certified the properties, and obviously anybody who has anything has to have trolley parking. And I've seen that happen when they have a van, I'm sure you've all seen it down, they move them back and forth. But rather than trying to regulate maybe the frequency of events, is manage the effects and hold the property owners to the effects of the thing, and where you can deal with that like you would any event service at the beach. You've got to have parking, you've got to have whatever. And rather than having, so then you know what you have to have that's consistent for that property. It's like TSA, pre-certification, you go through the speed line, you know, for things. So if you want to have one of these, you get at the speed line for certification. But I just think we've got to have, there's got to be a happy medium. Now, someone can say, yeah, they're having these commercial things, this is a residential neighborhood, and that Barbara, I agree with. But we have to also remember, since they can do it legally by law now, because we would, otherwise we wouldn't be doing this, that somehow in our current ordinances, there's some vested, not vested right-wise, but the ability without violating the law to do what they do. That gets back to Rosemary's point of, they built something on a business proposition that if we change, may not be sustainable. There's a consequence. We just, I think we still shouldn't do it, but we should be aware of what that means. So I think not only do we get an ordinance, I think we need to understand the business case, why that works. Like, they'll do two rentals in one week versus one, and they make more money on two versus one? That's why they're not, they don't like weekly rentals as much. There's a reason, and I think unless we understand the underlying business case analysis of those places, we're not going to get the right regulatory result from what we pass. That's my only concern. We really need to understand the business that's making that work to effectively regulate it to get the result Barbara's looking for, I think.
Rosemary, then Barbara, then Shannon.
Well, again, we did, even as a zoned residential, we still allowed that, we could have put things in place that you could only have with so many bathrooms or so many bedrooms. And we didn't. And these things, I think going forward, if you wanted to put something from going forward, it controls the size of the property on the size of the lot, then that's a different story. But these people have built these things, and they built them with a reason to make money. They could rent them out and make money. And I do think it's a little unfair to, we've allowed them to do it, and it's all of a sudden sort of say, now you can't do it, but this many times. Because I think it's going to really economically hurt some of these people. Now, being bad neighbors is not good either. And maybe we need to look at the penalties for being a bad neighbor of, if you, these are the rules, and if you break the rules, this is what's going to happen, you know. I'm just throwing things out there because I've got, I've got a lot of concerns about this. And, I mean, I live at the oceanfront. I live around the boardwalk, and Christmas lights are going up now, they're very exciting. And part of living in a resort area, you're going to have things. Sometimes it gets noisy. There's, sometimes I can't get out of my driveway because there's a parade. I mean, that's part of where you live.
It is. It's a tough issue.
Well, the oceanfront is owned commercial, and that's expected there. Sandbridge is zoned residential. And if these people built something for a business plan, then they misrepresented what their application was. Their application was for a residential home. And as I say, there are many residential homes down there that are lived in by the owner, who are pretty large. So, you know, if we're going to start telling people the size of the house that they could build, I mean, I can think of a lot of them all over the city who are pretty large, not just ones in Sandbridge. And remember, you know, this is going to apply everywhere. But the difference is, this is a residentially zoned area. And if we're going to knowingly approve a building that is for a commercial use, something is wrong in our permitting process for our building permits, because we require proper zoning. And if we're, you know, we very tightly control home occupations and so forth in neighborhoods, so that we're not allowing commercial uses in residential neighborhoods. So, but I think, I think the allowance and what zoning did do over the last couple of years was say, okay, three per year is perhaps the, what could work in a neighborhood. And so that's how we started, or how zoning tried to accommodate these that were happening, was that you could have three of these special events per year, and so forth. And that, you know, is what this ordinance allows as well. But it allows us to know that they're going to be occurring, and when they're going to be occurring, and to make certain that the things that are the problems are addressed. But I think we really have to be careful if we're going to say, because as Karen indicated, more than that, and you're in assembly use, and you need to be commercially zoned. And so, you know, I think of Croatan, I think of North Virginia Beach, you know, all of these places that, you know, we could have the same kinds of things if we're not, you know, if we're going to say, in our oceanfront areas, zoned residential, you can have, you can go ahead and make your business plan and build these homes, or you can't build a house above a certain size because we're going to regulate that. This is why it's so difficult. I think we really have to come to grips with this, what is a commercial use, and what is a residential use, and what's allowed in residential zoning from a commercial standpoint? And if it's, you know, if folks built them, they should have, and this was their intent, then they should have looked for someplace that was zoned that allowed.
And that's what I wanted to point out, too. I find it unbelievable that people are making, property owners are making this kind of a multimillion-dollar investment without a written zoning verification letter, without a determination from the zoning administrator that, yep, it's okay to operate it this way. I mean, they just went ahead and did it. And then the other point that Bill wanted me to point out is that we can't, zoning regulations can't trump the building codes. You can't really set a maximum number of bedrooms, or bathrooms, or house size. You know, that makes it harder. It's just very difficult.
We got another question. Shannon.
Do we know the amount of revenue that we're getting from these event homes on average the past two years?
We can get that.
Did you get that?
Right. What, the building code does specifically supersede zoning ordinances, but the state code does allow some degree of control over how large a house can be by means of, typically we would control that by means of floor area ratio or lot coverage. But aside from that, if you build a single-family home, the building code only sets forth minimum standards. So if you want to have 20 bedrooms and you can fit it in a house, that's fine. If you want two stoves, two refrigerators, you can. It's just that our control over how large these can be on the outside is limited by what they call bulk regulations, the volume of the house compared to the lot. What goes on inside it is something else. And so if somebody applies for single-family dwelling, a building permit, you can have as many bedrooms as you can fit in there, all that kind of thing. So it's, it's an extremely, it's a very difficult situation we're presented with.
John Moss, you have something else?
Yeah. You, Karen mentioned that you were surprised someone would build this structure without getting a letter from the zoning.
A zoning verification letter. We do them all the time when people get a bank loan for, to open a business, the bank wants to know for sure that they're zoned appropriately for that use. It's a routine.
What I'm asking this question is, since we can't cite them from a zoning ordinance violation today, from what I understand, correct? You can't cite them for a zoning violation today, is that correct?
Well, it's, yes, and we have. It's an interpretation, though.
Well, this is, this is an important point. Getting to the, getting to the point Barbara has about going forward. I'm trying to make, because you made a very, you know, I need to ask the city attorney afterwards to apply it as well. But if someone were to come in for that house, that house you show right there, and said, I'm going to be operating it this way, the way you suggested, can the legally, assuming this ordinance is not adopted, can you as the zoning administrator legally deny the building permit?
Yes, the building permit?
Well, you know, they're coming in there for something. This letter for zoning is to say they have the proper zoning for the bank, right?
Yes, if they come in and said, we are going to use this property for, primarily for renting, for parties and events, things like that, the answer would be, you can't.
We would classify it as a civil use, and we'd have to have appropriate zoning.
Okay, now, I'm just, I'm just a slow person, but bear with me. So now we, so that, so if that's true, then what precludes us, without any adoption of any ordinance today, for people who are operating in this way to say it's the same violation that they're non-conforming? What precludes us from doing that?
We've got, in your package, you've got a copy of a letter that we sent these out to, maybe at that time we did it, there were probably maybe thirty of these event homes, you know, letting everybody know that, you know, because the ordinance probably isn't clear, you know, that we let everybody know. So, yeah, we've actually taken that position.
Your answer is that we could.
Yes, but it's very difficult. I have, my, our zoning inspectors have to catch them having these events three times. We've done things, you know, the neighbor could tell a wedding's going to be held that evening when the truck comes with the chairs, and so then we send a zoning inspector out. I mean, it's very tough to catch, you know, document three event.
And I'm just trying to make sure, we have a law that's not practical to enforce. So are you, okay, just making sure I got that clear.
Right, and there's no permit.
So if we're proposing something new, would we then be getting rid of the law we can't enforce, so we, you know, a net gain of zero?
I think we're clarifying the law, it would clarify, we need to clarify the law and require permits so that it's easier for us to track this type of event. It's not easy either way.
The other thing it would do is, it would make the requirements clearer so that when Karen issues a zoning determination letter, and she gets appealed to the BZA, the BZA would have a clear standard by which to determine whether or not her interpretation is in fact the right interpretation. And then if it gets appealed further to the court.
Yeah.
Courts are the tough part.
Well, this has been a great discussion. And, you know, I just knew you just have a short road to go, right? I thought you got a long road to go, but we wish you the very best. I know everyone's trying to do the right thing. Okay, we'll move on. City Council comments? Bobby Dyer.
Yeah, thank you. Just an update of what we're doing with the Small Business Subcommittee on, you know, small business. We're having the results of the survey that was sent out. A lot of the businesses come back this Wednesday, and we're going to be convening and hopefully coming up with a bunch of recommendations that will actually help jumpstart a lot of small business activity in the town. And then also that we have members of our committee that spill over to Virginia Beach Vision, they've been meeting with Doug Smith. And what we're trying to do is create this whole energy about really encouraging small business and removing a lot of the barriers that are out there. There's motion in place right now to improve the building permit process and the permits and inspection process that are going to make things a lot more user-friendly in the future. But we'll be bringing forward some specific recommendations in January as a result of all this.
Very good. Amelia.
I have a few. First, I was really pleased to see the Waste Management and Public Works out at the Joint Library doing recycling, and they had quite a large line, and giving little mini waste boxes. And that was very successful. Got to talk with them and said, I will mention that they're doing a good job working with students and whoever come in there to learn about recycling. The other was what happened on the fourteenth, the reenactment. I'm sure some of you saw that in the papers, the British are coming again. But it was really a great turnout, and we have a little celebrity, because Vice Mayor Jones mentioned that he has descendants, what, six now?
Revolution.
For the revolution, who fought with the revolution, which was just perfect, because they had the person who had this. So that was very interesting, and I wasn't able to see every bit of it, but I was so happy that the church did that for 240 years. So it was like a precursor to the independence in 1776. So I really feel we have something to celebrate for our history in Kempsville. And then on the same day, they had the India Fest, their twentieth anniversary for the second time in Virginia Beach. And they are excited about being in Virginia Beach. We had our mayor there, Congressman Bobby Scott, and Congressman Rigel, as well as the Hampton Roads Chamber. So that is really a nice partnership, and we're happy that we can, you know, put out the Red Coffee Public Group. On November 30th, we have the dedication of Kemp's Landing Park, Kempsville Road, Princess Anne Road intersection, just giving them its blessings, and of course, the Philippine Sister City anchor of friendship. If you pass around there, it really looks nice.
Is this in the Kempsville borough?
November, what?
This is in the Kempsville district.
It's in the Kempsville district. So right at the gazebo, we're really excited about that. And the lights are out, they're really look good. So please come out November 30th. And our city clerk is putting, helping put all of this program together. As you know, she is the main lady for that, and Jim Woods, the liaison. So please take a copy, please share it with others, because this is going to be very exciting.
Going to put a statue of an eagle there?
Stuffed eagle.
The eaglets have fled the nest.
Other than that, what did you do this week?
Anybody else? John and John, John or this town.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, Councilman Davenport and the mayor and myself were at the first Friday Night Vibe, and they put on quite an event. And we had a lot of members, I was really delighted to see we had a lot of members from our planning staff that came out there. And at that deal, they presented the mayor with the key to the vibe district, which I will again present to the mayor today, because he couldn't fit it in his pocket. He probably could have been injured if he tried. But I'm going to pass it around, and it's signed by the vast majority of the businesses that are in the vibe district. And I'd like the council to note that, with the exception of one business, all of these have been added in the last three years, to kind of give you a sense of really how vibrant and thriving this area is. So I'll pass it around, ultimately get back to you, Mr. Mayor, and you can find an appropriate spot for it.
But can I add on to that?
Yes, please.
I'd ask that each council member take some time to go down there. I knew something was going on, but I didn't know to the extent of it. And the truth of the matter, everything that's occurred so far has occurred on private dollars. And it's pretty impressive. I think two of the most popular restaurants in Hampton Roads right now are located on 17th Street.
Hard to believe.
Okay, and in an area where it wasn't a very pretty site a few years ago. So that speaks volumes to me, to me, and ruptures.
That's quite right. I'm done with that, Mr. Mayor, but I do have two other quick items. One was, I met with some of the residents around 40th Street regarding the fitness park this past week, and also met with Mr. Hillier and spoke to him about it. And they're trying to work through some details in terms of trying to make sure that the park's used appropriately and that the hours, just as we would for any park in the city. And so in order to affect that change, the applicant has agreed to deferral of that boat until the first meeting in January. So if we could, if we make that note for the public as well. And then the last thing I had, Mr. Mayor, is, you know, we had, we had discussed at our last meeting regarding offshore drilling, and I think it was Mr. Davenport that had recommended that perhaps we repeal our existing stance on offshore drilling until which time we can come up with a different stance. And I think that that has an awful lot of merit. I'm certainly not prepared to make an opinion one way or another, but as long as we have the opinion out there, then it really is a moot point about while we're deciding. So, you know, I think, you know, that probably in.
Well, you know, as I said last week, I just wanted to have that one brought forward, and I'm happy to bring it back.
I might suggest that maybe, because I think that the comment period closes at the end of this year. And so either we need to really speed things up so we can make an opinion, in my view, whether it's to maintain the current or take a contrary view, or we probably just need to table it until we have. just need to table it until we have the time that, that we can actually.
That's the one I like.
Well, then, I'd, I'd suggest that we bring forth and we wanted to do that and help you with that there, Mr. Mayor.
Will you take care of that, Mr. Styles?
I'm going to do the resolution. I'm going to.
I'm going to let the city attorney smith it up.
May I ask, if the comment period ends the end of this year and we are not going to do anything until early January to either just be neutral or whatnot, won't our comment stand as it is now?
We can be neutral next, at our next meeting.
That's, that was my point, Barbara.
All you got to do is repeal the resolution.
So we would do that, but I thought you meant that we would wait and do that in January.
Well, I, my point is that we either need to do one or the other. We either need to speed things up and take, reaffirm our stance or take a different stance. I don't know that we've got the time to do that. And, and so my suggestion would be that we just repeal the current one and just have a non, a neutral.
But at our, in December, not early.
That's my suggestion. Yes, ma'am.
So you want a resolution repealing your earlier endorsement? That, that's what I.
I very rarely do that, Mr. Styles.
We could do that, sir.
Happy to do it, sir. Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? John?
I just would like the city manager to follow up with the commissioner of the revenue. I'd like to, maybe it's not the, when the appropriate time comes, but be, maybe sometime in February to get, what was, after we had made the change, how many people were affected? But I also would like to know in aggregate, not by individual, how many people who qualified at one level before we adopted the policy and how many people changed? And so we could get a feel for what was the additional financial burden that our policy placed on people. I have gotten a lot of feedback from senior citizens in our community, and I'm sure I'm not the only one, who has, hey, I used to get this, now I'm down to 20, you know, my income's not, you know, flat. I mean, I just think that we, I certainly plan to come back and look at that, we look at our budget. But I think we weren't as sensitive to the imposition of that and how it was done. I'd just like to get some data behind that so we could see how that policy and its implementation really affected people.
Bobby?
Just real quick, this Thursday night at the.
You're going live.
Okay. We're going to have a town hall meeting at the Public Engagement at the Convention Center on the arena. And once again, this is a marvelous opportunity for proponents, opponents to come, get the information from Doug Smith that is out there. So this way, you know, the public is, you know, very engaged in what we're doing. And as we go forward, I think it would be most helpful. Jim, anything?
You addressed it, Bob.
Thank you. Great. Any other comments? Yes, Ben?
Tonight, two weeks ago, I passed around a resolution supporting legislation for Virginia to participate in the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative. I wanted to pass around the, the final version of it. I hope that everybody's had time to take a look at it and any comments that you all had, which I received none, when I'm hoping that that means that everybody is in support.
The one in the agenda?
Yes, there is one change.
Let's see, the change was requested by council members Davenport and Moss.
You just changed the, the title?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, let's go through the agenda review, sir.
All right. First, under ordinances and resolutions, anybody have any comments on any of them?
I do. I found voting no on item four.
Wait a minute, hold on. Okay, is it revenue sharing?
Correct. I have an explanation for my vote. Item five. I think item six should be deferred. There is a lot that we don't really know about this. I should have talked about the council concerns. I shared a number of my questions with the city manager, which I haven't, maybe they're in here, but I haven't seen the answers to them yet. But I don't think we have any indication of how much we have interacted with the private market and people who are out there trying to acquire these things and do a commercial industry. How does our acquiring this property for VMRC, does it or does it not impact getting to a critical mass of commercial harvesting? I just think, I could go through my phone, because I sent them by email, a list of questions, which I will cover, but there's a lot of homework that needs to be done to understand the, the impact of this change. And what is the difference in the performance of a privately held oyster bed from one that's owned by the city and that's reserved? How is it, how does the performance of cleaning water substantially differ that would warrant government's intrusion to be the, to be the buyer of the lease versus letting the marketplace buy these places? And why do we believe the marketplace won't acquire the property? I just think there's a lot of aspects, it's a regulation, but if you were trying to get a regulation to the state or to the federal government, there would be an analysis of the fiscal impact and what are the other alternatives to achieve the same policy output?
Jim, what type of, when does this need to be acted on? Is there a timeframe on it?
Do you know, Dave, I mean?
Sir, this is part of the Echo Restoration Project that started in 2002, that we have a federal cost share partnership with the federal government that you all approved and that you approved in September the, the initiation of, of the first phase. And so what we're really doing here is we're pursuing voluntary sales of private oyster leases that are out there, willing sellers that want to do that. We'll be creating oyster sanctuaries associated with the, the three phases, the three actions that take place in the phase. And it's a program that you all have been aware of for well over a decade.
And let me ask you this question, Dave. I know at the state level right now, the issue's been brought up. A lot of these are being taken over privately and they're causing a lot of issues as far as injuries to people, boats running across them and things along these lines. Would this, is this related or could this help? I mean, because I know that they're going to, the property owners around the waterfront have gone to the state to try to get some help.
Right. This is really related not so much as to try and preclude people from putting their baskets, oyster baskets out in navigable channels. It's more related to the fact that as the local government were required to procure real estate associated with the project, and this is, this is a right away acquisition so that sanctuary reefs can be created with federal dollars and a cost share arrangement with the, with the city.
You want to vote no, John?
My point is, the dollars in account only aren't just for the purchases of oyster beds. That CIT project has a much broader scope.
Yes, sir. Subaquatic vegetation and.
I just want to make sure the representation.
Hey, we're going, we're going.
I do want to vote no, but I will go through all my questions.
And we'd like to get on your agenda and we'll give you another vote.
I would like that to be full for a separate vote. But that deserves more discussion than we're giving it. I will type that off the.
Well, we'll go ahead and keep it on consent and then you'll, I will give you your time.
Do that, Mr. Mayor. I think I have the right to object.
You know, whatever you want to do. We'll just move along. We'll pull it.
Okay. Anything else on ordinance and resolutions? All right. How about under planning? James O. Hertz, Jr., Prince Sam, Ms. Henley?
That's, I've heard no concerns.
John and Randy Vogel, Hunt Club Farm.
I'll be abstaining on that.
Prince Sam, I got that.
Same.
Okay, Barbara?
I've heard no disagreement, can be on consent.
All right. Price Holdings LLC, it's in Bayside, and I haven't heard any problems on it.
And excuse me, again, I want to applaud the staff on this. This is something that could have turned out to be not a very pleasant situation with right away being acquired. And the Price family called me and thanked me for the job the staff had done. I think, Dave, you were running with that. Thank you.
They did a good job working that out.
They really did.
On Point Security Academy LLC of Maddox Associates, Bayside, I don't have any problem with it.
I'll abstain on that, please.
Five, Jim Golden, Melissa Texter and Marina Shores Repair Corporation, Lynn Haven, Mr. Wood.
That's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item six, Second Shot LLC in Alberta, Vince Sagara, Kempsville, Dr. Ammon, Ross Ammon. Seven, Luxury Auto Rentals and Sales LLC in Malibu, Florida Holdings, Inc., Lynn Haven, Mr. Wood.
Anything they do to that building is better than what's.
But it looks like they're working on it pretty hard.
Jump eight, Jump Trampoline Park and General Goth Properties, Rose Hall, Ms. Kane?
I'm good with that and my son is excited to jump.
As are the personal injuries.
All right. Nine, Princess Anne Meadows LLC and Five Mile Stretch Associates. Ms. Henley?
I'm going to ask, this be deferred to December 8th? And I would like to go over with y'all some of the things that are being worked out since we have worked on this for so long. You probably want me to do it out there, since we seem to be running out of time here.
Oh, sure.
Okay, I can do it out there.
We'll pull that, then.
You don't have to pull it. It could still be on consent, but I just like time to explain.
So it's okay to put it on the consent.
Right.
For deferral to the eighth.
To let everybody know what's happening since we have such a history.
Ten, M&amp;K Investments LLC, Beach District, Mr. Earn?
No issues with that, Mr. Ross, consent please.
And eleven, City of Virginia Beach Ordinance to amend zoning ordinance established in North End Overlay and B to amend the official zoning map to add the North End Overlay District in the Beach District, Mr. Earn?
I think that's really Lynn Haven, but I don't have an issue with it.
You can't have my district this way.
Is this your district?
Yeah, North End.
Everybody just with the beach.
Very good, counsel. The chair will entertain motions recessed into a closed session pursuant to the exemption of promoting meetings by section 2.2-3711A Code of Virginia's Amendment for the following purposes: Public contract discussion of award of a public contract involving expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.2-3711A 29 Town Center Page Six. Publicly held property discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.2-3711A three, Beach District. Personnel matters discussion consideration of or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, promotion, salaries, discipline or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees pursuant to section 2.2-3711A one, council appointments, council board, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies and appointees. Stand up a motion.
Stand up.
Stand up a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Davenport?
Aye.
Mr. Dyer?